Have everybody's attention please. Real quick, alright. I just want to welcome everybody this evening. I appreciate everybody coming out. Before I call the meeting to order, I just have a couple of really quick brief announcements that I need to make on behalf of other parts of our school district. First thing is the Springdale School Nutrition Association is doing a cookie dough fundraiser. I know that seems kind of odd. It's the Nutrition Association doing a cookie dough fundraiser, but it is for a great cause. It's for the student scholarship fund. So anybody that wants to buy cookie dough, there's going to be information about that. If you're a teacher or administrator in the district, you're going to be getting an announcement through the mail. I think Trent Jones is sending that out. But there'll be something on the website at some point if you want to order cookie dough. I'm not going to worry about that. And with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. The April 11th, 2023 school board meeting is now called to order. And I'm going to bring up Jonathan Ramirez Moreno from DT SOI. He's going to lead our pledge. Come on up.
This is on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay Jonathan, tell us a little bit about yourself and your school year and how things are going.
Um, so I currently attend DT SOI. I am a senior. I have been going there since eighth grade. And currently I am in the NWTI automotive program, which I really enjoyed, I would say that, at the beginning of the program. I didn't really know a lot of people. I had maybe like two or three friends in that class. And to this point now, I'm basically friends with everybody in that class. We all know a little bit about each other. And I feel like that's a really great program and opportunity that I got to take this year since I'm about to graduate. And I could go and return again to take my final year and actually get my certificate if I wanted to. But you know, basically that's like a free year. I didn't have to pay anything. It was all free, which I really loved it. And the teachers are just great, fantastic. And yeah, that's what I'm currently taking. Also, I know that last year I took nutrition, which I also had, which is also a college course that I took. I enjoyed it very well. I feel like it's a great opportunity to take these college classes and knock them out before going to actual college and having to pay a way more and more amount than we have to do right now. But yeah.
Board, does anybody have any questions for Jonathan?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I think this is the first career goal I've ever seen where you're not just talking about what you want to do, but what you want to do for others. That you want to build a business to help others.
I appreciate that.
Support their families and provide a living. And I think that's pretty incredible.
Thank you, yeah.
That you know you're thinking about that. That's amazing.
Thank you.
Got you interested in automotive?
Automotive? Um, I've always, since a kid, um, I always enjoyed cars. I was always curious on like what made them work, what made them function. But as older as I got, I started to see it as something that's really reliable. For example, if you, you know, you have to change your oil, you don't want to go to someone to change your oil. If you can do it yourself, you know, you save some money, save yourself some work, you know. I feel like it's better to do it your own, yourself, and be able to do it correctly, you know, than someone else maybe not do it as properly as you can. And also just save you time, you know. And you know, it's just one of those reliability things, you know, you get stranded, you don't know how to change the tire, you got to call someone, you know, you could have done it yourself, you would have been fine, you know. So that's one of my things. I really want to be reliable, especially with myself. Not having to rely too much on someone, but you know, being able to do it yourself. But yeah.
Board?
Parents here?
Yeah, is your mom, dad?
Uh, no, they're not here. They're working currently. Yeah, just me.
Okay. I see on your information sheet, you, uh, we always like hearing where the, where the kids have gone to school. You went to Tyson Elementary, then to Tyson Middle School, now the Don Tyson School of Innovation.
Yeah, that's crazy. That's crazy.
There, so that's awesome. Anything else, board?
Are you thinking you want to go and work in the automotive industry? Or are you still kind of up in the air about what you're going to do after high school?
Um, I feel like it could, there could be a possibility with it. But right now, um, I kind of really want to stick to the business aspect of, you know, moving on, creating own business. But that might, you know, go back to, you know, automotive, who knows? But at the end of the day. Yeah, exactly. So it just, just depends on what happens, you know. Just wait for the future. That's all we can do.
Good job.
Yeah.
Good to have options. So, well, we appreciate you being here this evening. We'll be, we'll be watching you as you progress in your career. Come back and see us sometime.
Alright, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Cleveland, I think we have one change on our agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. To add, we're going to recognize some new administrators to the district.
It's going to be under D, uh, I, under D?
Yes. That's appropriate for the board.
Yep, you bet. Okay, with that one addition, do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Mrs. Creek, a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, now to the consent agenda, um, with last month's school board meetings and the out of district, out of district transfers. Is there any questions about any of that?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Ramos, a second by Mr. Emerson to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cleveland for a whole bunch of really cool recognitions of our kids and faculty, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're going to start a couple math completers, which is pretty interesting. I'd like to invite Mr. Rodney Ellis to the front. And I think Ms. Williamson, Kelly Williamson, if she's here, I didn't see her. I know I saw her husband. So, anyway, here he is. These are two wonderful people who are leading our district initiative for all CTE. And quite frankly, they're, they're being recognized across the state for their work, so.
Yeah, so good evening, board. So this is some of the pieces that we've been talking to you about as the years progressed. With our curriculum, we were able to build in an option for our students through a course that we offer in NCCR, which is one of the curriculums that we use in construction and industrial maintenance and some of our other platforms. And so this technical math piece, I'm working with Dr. Smith and Ms. Williamson, our administrative team and Department of Career Tech Ed of the state. We were able to get a waiver basically, where we were able to build a test, a technical math test, and a performance assessment piece. So with that, this is our first crop that all called in that have gone through this and have actually gotten that technical math credit. So this is all a big thanks to our instructors, Ashley Osborne, Wes Higginson at DT SOI, and Chad Burkett and Josh Rice at SHS. And then we also have Max Tisher, who's a DT SOI industrial maintenance student, who's also gotten that credit. And this is something that we'll continue to offer to our students who take this curriculum.
So. So it's really cool.
Yeah.
Four math, they get, you have to take four math. So if they pass all of their nine modules, the written part and the doing part, and then they sit for this exam, they get a math credit. Like they're skipping or earning, they're not skipping, they're earning a math credit because there's so much math embedded in this curriculum. So it's really a two for one, right? So what, what student doesn't want this, right? I know Max Tisher wanted it, so the rest of them do as well. So we're really, really proud of these students and especially the support from their teachers because without them, we would not be able to do this work, so.
I think hugely they add to that. It's added that option to our seniors that we were looking for, for that work flexibility. Because most of the students on this list are now out in a position or placement. And that's freed up their schedule with that math and English credit that's typically only left as a senior to give them that opportunity. So we're going to start working on that technical literacy piece to add to that.
I think we were a little slow in understanding that they didn't have to go to that classroom to hear, so they kept.
Yes, go to work. We heard an hour's worth or sit in a math class. Which would you rather do?
That makes sense.
You're probably there with me.
Two for one. So, yes, which allows them to do this, which is work-based learning. And so our stakeholders work-based learning a lot of different things, as you can see listed there on the left. And our students are tasked with not only learning things in our classrooms, but also going out and earning a wage to be able to put those skills to real work. So you get this, what we love to talk about is return on investment. So this year, we have 220 students in our district that are sixteen years of age and above that are working. And we want to double, triple and just, I mean, how many do we know? How many juniors and seniors do we have in this school district? Anybody? Anybody?
About 3,000.
3,000? Okay, so we want 3,000 of them to be working. We want them to be getting, I see some yeses over there. Do you have a job that you'd like to offer them?
No way.
So we have increased our business partnerships quite a bit. So just from the fall when Mr. Ellis started this initiative to just amping it up, we had work programs. But now we've upped it 217%, which is huge. And we're not just doing, um, fast food is important. And Cody Matthews would definitely say we have the most McDonald's anywhere. If you look at this, these are the actual numbers of employment that we have with our students working. We have lots of opportunities and you can see that restaurants are still the largest amount. So the blue is from the fall, the green is from the spring. So you can see trade in industry, which includes a lot of things. It includes our TV productions. It includes automation robotics. It includes industrial maintenance technology, construction, nursing, medical. So that trade in the industry, that's how our state organizes this. And so that's got a lot of good stuff in it. Restaurant is what we've normally done in the past. Retail, got a lot of Walmart in there. Education, we have more students working in our middle school, junior high, and elementary schools than we ever have before. We are upping that with the parent professional exam. You can see these are our new business partners. And Walmart has a lot of retail, but they're also doing the service shop repair technician now. Some of our graduates have come back and given, from Black Bear Real Estate, that's Peyton Parker, Springdale High School alum. He has advertising, graphic design, students too, working for him through the summer. So we have a little bit of everything. We have drubium. Thank you, Mr. Bell. We have internships there that we're working with in cybersecurity. So all of our pathways, we are just trying to get these students employed so that they are learning, gaining skill, and moving forward. So what do you want to say about it?
Well, I think that's important. I just believe that, I heard the term last week at a workforce summit, it's career-ready. So it's options. You know, I can work, I can earn while I learn is the way that I've, you've heard me term that. We use that phrase a lot, that it's about options, just like the young man that was speaking to you who spoke the pledge. You know, it's about options. So I've got options in front of me. It's like Aaron has options, right? I can choose to work, I can choose to go to school, I could have an employer pay for me to go to school. I mean, I could benefit from both worlds. So it's never either or, it's never just college or career. It's both. And our industry and business want both, and that's a message that we have to continually articulate because our business and industry partners want both of those mindsets. And those strategic partnerships are opening up opportunities even for our seventeen-year-olds that we've not had previously. We've got two seventeen-year-olds at Bruner and Lay who are doing CNC, which is computer numeric control machine. And they're rocking it. I mean, they love them and they want to continue to grow that. Now they're looking at placing a person into procurement for that, so that's an opportunity for some of our business students. Working with Eddie, now there's opportunities at the bank. So I mean, there's just opportunities. And we don't ever want to limit our students from an understanding. It's either or, it can be both. So it's all about options.
We all need a career.
Yeah.
And there's lots of different ways to get there. So we're excited about what's happening.
Some good things.
I mean, the numbers that you see today, we just got six new ones today, so.
And we've got twenty at Kimball tonight. Kimball's hosting an open house. And so we've got about twenty of our students that are attending that, our seniors who will be interviewing. So I mean, it's been, the last three weeks, it's been a really good spree. We've had a lot of recent hires and more on the way, so we're just looking to see what happens. And we're really excited about the future for where this is headed. So I appreciate all your support, appreciate this administrative team and, and all the different business and industry partners. Most of all, our goal is for our kids that are standing up front of you today to have those options.
So thank you. Kids that are in this room, especially the younger ones, they have a really bright future. Paying attention to opportunities you have in Springdale Schools.
Any questions, please?
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thanks, sir. Thank you, man. Mr. President, we had, over the last few weeks, CR Crawford Construction reached out to us and said that they had a hard hat award and had a person that they wanted to celebrate tonight. So I'd like to ask Becky to come up. This is Becky Gosnell. She's from CR Crawford. You need any help or, you go right to the front. You need any help or are you good, go by yourself?
Okay. Um, thank you for letting me be here. And as, as I explained to you, each month, we, CR Crawford has been recognizing a schoolperson of the month in one of the various districts across the state. This month, we selected Springdale, and with the help of Dr. Cleveland, I have the honor of presenting this award, it was so timely, to Rodney Ellis. So back. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
That was nice. Alright, I'd like to recognize someone important tonight. Not that they haven't all been important, but especially, I'd like to invite Coach Stellic, Coach Wayne Stellic. He's our athletic director. And Coach Stellic is making a little bit of a move from full-time AD to, what is the, there's a commercial about part-time hustle. He's going to be hustling there as our director, uh, working with foundation and trying to help us out. But he has the opportunity tonight to really highlight some of our athletic achievements this year. And so I'll turn it over to Coach Stellic. But, and after Coach Stellic, you recognize everyone, I want to talk a little bit about you, if that's okay. Okay.
Our winter sports this year has been phenomenal, maybe the best we've had in decades. So I've got my list, so I don't forget anybody, but we've got conference championships, runner-up in state and state championships. So I want to start off with Josh Rivers, Springdale Wrestling. Come on down, everybody.
Good evening, board. We had a really special year. I like to say that we're in the toughest conference in the state. Whatever conference you believe is the toughest in college, or, you know, I believe the SEC, we're the SEC, okay? Seventy-five percent of all state medalists come from Northwest Arkansas, okay? We had, uh, on the girls' side, we had nine qualifiers, five state medalists, one state champion, and we went four and one in the finals matches for placement. On the boys' side, we had eight qualifiers, six, six state medalists, four in the finals, two state champs, two runner-ups. And between us and Harbor, I'm giving them some kudos too, because between us, we put over half of the kids going for first and second. No other district in the state was able to do that. And I mean, that's just a testament to. Kind of works out that today in the mail, they're all states came in, so I kind of just want to recognize them as they, they've done all the hard work. So Austin. Full-time finalist and runner-up this year is Bruce Quail. Al Medina. Cooper Clausen, our state, one of our state champions couldn't be here tonight for band assessment, so we'll, we'll give him a pass. And then Jackson Sportsman is our state champion. Do you have any questions for our, our athletes this year?
Get a picture here.
Yeah.
Squeeze in there close like you like each other. Come on.
Like the wrestling.
Got it, thank you.
Good job, everybody. Anybody's parents here? Any parents? Are there any parents here of the wrestlers? Alright, okay, great. Well, thanks for being here.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
The Springdale Boys and Girls Wrestling Team are in the top five in state championship. Now let's talk about Harbor Wrestling and their top five program. Coach Nico West.
Boys and girls.
Good evening, board. Thanks for having us and inviting us here to be in front of you here while they're making their way down here. Got a real special group here, both boys and girls, and it's quite challenging to, to kind of be in charge of both. But, you know, with, with the help of some great assistant coaches. Go ahead, come on over, guys. Our, our coaches did a phenomenal job. They, they stepped in, helped, and, you know, made, made my job a little easier. So I want to say kudos to them, but talking about these guys and girls here who had a fantastic year. Our boys, we had ten qualifiers, and this is the first year that we had a qualifier. We qualified more, uh, more boys than, than any other team in our conference. We had seven all-state boys. And, you know, I've got two individuals that I want to come up and just share a little bit about, about our program and who they are. And I want to bring up Lane Parrish. Lane has been a four-year starter for us. And I don't want to take away anything he may, he may say, but, but he's Harbor's first four-time finalist. And so I just want to bring him up, just say a few words.
My name is Lane Parrish, and this program has allowed me to be a four-time conference champion finalist and one-time state champion my junior year. But more importantly, it has made lifelong bonds and family around me that I'll forever hold. And I even hold more dear to my heart is the mental ability to get through past situat, I mean, future situations in life.
And I want to bring Keith Samuel up here. Keith, this was his very first time being at the state tournament. He's been a four-year member of our program, had two other brothers that have wrestled at Harbor. And for the first time, being, like I said, being a first-time state finalist, he qualified for state and, and found himself on the podium. So I want Keith Samuel to come up.
Uh, my name is Keith Samuel, and I really didn't come prepared for this, but. But, um, uh, freak. Uh, um, I guess this is like, uh, family to me. That's, yeah. Oh, and there's something coach wanted me to say. I'm the first family to place on, uh, to be on the podium. And my fam, oh, family.
And we want to, um, talk about our, our ladies here. Our ladies, this is the fourth year that we've had the program. Girls wrestling got sanctioned four years ago. And four years ago, we had four wrestlers that competed state tournament. And this year, we had eleven that qualified. And again, our girls was the most, uh, team in our conference that qualified the most for state tournament. We had two state champions, and, and I just, and I do have a couple, two ladies that I want to come up and speak briefly to you as well. But we had eleven qualifiers, ten all-state wrestlers, two state champions. And our wrestling team was also mentioned in the national rankings as honorable mention. So that's a, that's always a blessing to, to get recognized by, by the, by national rankings. But I want to ask Abby Kelly to come up and, and speak. And Abby came to us from basketball. She, she played basketball at Central as a, as a freshman. And then she transitioned over to wrestling her sophomore year. But something about Abby, come on up here, Abby, is Abby's brother was part of our 2016 state team.
Um, hi, I'm Abby Kelly. Um, like Lane said, this sport has taught me lifelong lessons that I'll always hold dear to my heart, as well as family. All these teammates have become family that have pushed me every day. And being able to have a facility to wrestle in every day to get ready for big tournaments like the state championship is. Yeah.
Okay, this last one, just like any, any other coach at, at state tournament, you're always falling points. You're always seeing how far, what needs to happen in order for you to win. Where can we get points? How can we catch someone? And all season, Rogers has been our nemesis. They've, they've been ahead of us. They've, they were ahead of us at regionals by, uh, actually, we were beating them by one point at regionals. And they won the very last match to beat us by four points for, for the regional championship. Now, I want to fast forward to say, like I said, many parts had to happen, so each one of these ladies had a part in what took place. And the reason I asked Nico to come up, she was the last lady to wrestle. And Rogers is ahead of us by one point. And they had a girl in finals and Nico was going for third. And we saw that Rogers had lost in the middle of her match, and so it came, it really came down to her, and she had no clue with the impact of her match. And so Nico got the win in the second period, and we beat Rogers by four points for, for a state title. Uh, and what better name to have than Nico Ruataki?
I'm really bad at this. But they spelled my last name wrong. First thing I want to say, thank our, um, family father, both, for this special day. And just want to thank my old teammates, my coaches, who taught me how to be, uh, confident about. want to thank my old teammates, my coaches, who taught me how to be confident about winning stuff, and that's it.
And again, thank you for allowing us this opportunity, and do you have any questions for me or these coaches or any of these ladies or gentlemen here?
You guys did a great job. I'm assuming next year's going to be just as good, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's the goal every year.
Do we have any parents here from your kids?
Parents, raise your hand, parents.
Good job. Good luck, everybody.
And to reiterate what Coach West said, when the Rogers girl lost and the Harbor girl won, the corner of the Stevens Gymnasium went just ballistic, because they knew that they'd won. And, you know, I'm sitting up on the concourse watching all this, and all of a sudden, you just see fifty to a hundred people just jump for joy, because they knew they had success with the championship. Pretty neat, good picture from my mind. Basketball now. Great year of basketball in our district. Let's welcome Ethan Luther and Central's eighth-grade boys.
Good evening, board. Thank you for having us. These guys behind me had a great season. They went twenty and oh, a lot with going twenty and oh, then won conference, and new to our league this year, we had a final four tournament, and so we were able to win that as well. Some of the key moments that I can think of is, most days, the boys had to travel to practice, which cut into our court time. From November to the end of the season, the boys practiced six days per week, a lot of times on Saturday mornings, we'd ask them to come in and practice. All the boys were coached, bought into their roles. The boys won many close, hard-fought games. What I'm proud of is they really didn't blow anybody out. We had to come from behind four or five times. We were down, guys, twelve to Kimmons, and we made in-game adjustments, came back, and won the game. This kid right here against Washington hit a thirty footer to put it in overtime. Right, and then we wanted, we had to go into the second overtime, we were able to win. Favorite memory of the season was seeing the kids' faces after we won the conference and tournament, and they gave me a couple water bottle showers, which was kind of cold, but it was dessert, but I really enjoyed it. Our last team memory was, they always believed they were going to win, showed up for big moments. We really preached defense at Central, and so we had to beat Ramy for the final four championship, which was held at Fayetteville High School, so it's kind of a big stage for these kids. And we were, what were we, I think we were up two, I think Ramy went for a three, and Uno, where you at? Uno blocked the shot, then he dove on the ground to get the defensive board, and as time ran out, so couldn't ask for a better season from these guys, and just really extremely proud of these group of boys. So, thank you all for having us in front of you tonight. These guys are kind of quiet, so y'all have any questions for them?
Parents, any parents here? We have a few parents, good. Congratulations.
Keep up the good work, we'll be watching.
Hey, Coach West, these guys aren't quiet. They were up in the office the other day, they were hysterical. It's a great group of kids. Good job.
We were able to host the ninth-grade girls' final four this year, and back-to-back champions, Central Girls Basketball and Brandy Davis. Brandy?
Hey, guys, how are y'all? Hey, thanks for having us. Yeah, we had a great year, couldn't be better, twenty-three and oh, which was an outstanding achievement. You know, our average margin of victory was about twenty points for every game. You know, a lot of talent this year, but I think there's one game that sticks out to me that just like explains the character of these girls, and it was our triple overtime win, triple overtime win at Farmington. You know, we were down ten at halftime in a lot of foul trouble, and, you know, they just bounced back, and they just were not going to lose the game. I had three out of my five starters fouled out. A young lady, Sabrina, comes in, hadn't had a lot of minutes, barely warmed up, and she comes in and knocks down two free throws at the end of the game, and, you know, it was just an outstanding team win by everyone, and just told us a lot about who we are. The girls, you know, we had first-period practice, which has its advantages, but one of them is not getting to school ninety minutes before the bell rings. They did it consistently. I mean, we do it from August to almost March, and, what else did I want to say? Sundays, all that good stuff, but really, like, I wanted to give a couple of girls a chance to talk to you about the season, because that's really, really who we're here to honor.
Annabelle Roller. McKinley Campbell.
Hi, I'm Annabelle Roller. I'm a freshman, and I play a shooting guard. This season, we went twenty-three and oh, like Coach Davis said, and I agree with her, our biggest win was our triple overtime win, and we had some girls that hadn't played a lot and came in, they won that game for us, and, I mean, this team has just been so special to me, because the chemistry was just absolutely amazing. We were all best friends, and that's just something that I think really put us over the top.
Hi, I'm McKinley Campbell. I'm in eighth grade, and I play point guard. This season was not easy. We had a lot of early mornings and ups and downs, but overall, our team worked really hard, and we played together, and that's what caused us to accomplish our ghost.
Hi, my name is Addison Campbell, and, yeah, I said it was great, and, yeah.
Where are you going, your late team? Uh, Coach. Um, golly. So, Coach, Coach Jenkins nominated me for Arkansas Basketball Coach Association Coach of the Year, Junior High Girls Coach of the Year, so I was selected for that. But, the reason I was selected for that, first of all, Coach Jenkins is a pretty good writer, and because they just worked their tails off for me, so I just get to show up and be part of what they do, so, thank you.
Good job. Congratulations.
Those girls are vashful. They came in last Friday to the office. They're not vashful. They were fun. They cleaned us out.
Should I fob-bomb that right there? Yeah.
Good job, ladies.
Thank you, thank you. On the high school level, Harbor Girls Basketball won back-to-backs conference championships. Let's welcome Coach Jenkins.
Thank you so much for having us. We're honored to be back in front of you again as our second conference championship in Harbor Girls Basketball history, back-to-back. We were twenty and nine on the season, overall thirteen and three for the conference, so we kind of shared that, unfortunately, with Bentonville and Northside, but we won't talk about them tonight. We had a very challenging season. We returned some very good players in Galicia Andrew, Delaney Roller, who were two of our captains, Mary Blake Marfield, who's the captain, who's not here, and Patches McDaniel, who was a returner for us as well. But the rest of our players hadn't played very many varsity minutes, so it was a struggle at times. We made a big trip to Mansfield, Texas over the Christmas holidays, which was very challenging. The level of Texas basketball that we played against really prepared us for our conference, which is very tough. We were two and two when we were there and played very good competition, so I think we learned a lot about ourselves during that tournament, and we were able to grow from that and then roll into our conference season and be very competitive this year with what was, seemed like, on paper, we had some returners, but we're very, still young with experience, and so I'm really proud of these young ladies. Can't say enough about our volunteer assistant, Bakari Norman, who does everything on game day setup. When we had to host, we got to host Tyson and Southwest because of construction, he ran the concession stand, did everything behind the scenes, so very proud to have him as a part of our program. And then my assistant coach, Josh Tarver, who's been with me now for four years, and we're starting to see some progress and get it done, and we can just look at each other and it clicks for us, and things are awesome with there. To our junior high coaches with Coach Davis and Coach Bullard at Southwest, the way they blend our program together to have young ladies prepared, and all the way down to all of our coaches and people that are involved. So, we're very proud of our program and our girls, and I'm going to step back and let these two all-conference players say a couple things. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Galicia Andrew. First off, I want to thank God for this opportunity to be able to bring us back here again. On behalf of our team, both Delaney and I are glad to be able to speak. With my four years of being able to play at Harbor, I was able to grow, not only as a basketball player, but as a strong woman as well, and props to Coach Jenkins for being able to teach me that. I also want to thank all my teammates and coaches, Coach Tarver and Coach Norman, for pushing me to be at my best, and one thing that I'll definitely miss is freshman year, Patches McDaniel and Mary Blake Marfield and I, we would always carpool with Coach Tarver from Central, and that's one that I'll miss for sure.
I'm Delaney Roller. Last year was my second year playing as a Harbor Wildcat, and I transferred my sophomore year to Harbor. I can easily say it was probably the best decision of my life, because of Coach Jenkins and Coach Tarver and Coach Norman. I am extremely grateful to be holding another plaque, but we're going for another one, three-peat next year, and I'm really excited to build the program with these girls that I've got coming up. My sister's going to be a sophomore, so I'm going to get to play with her, and we've got a lot of talent coming in, so I'm really, really excited to see what we're going to be able to do next year.
Any of y'all's parents here?
We'll say, we'll mention that Galicia is going to go on and further her career at Rockhurst University. She'll play basketball there, her education, and then Patches McDaniel, who's not here tonight, she's going to play at Arkansas Tech University as well. So, we have some overachievers that are going to get to continue their education, so it's exciting, and we have the young ones that you saw, we're excited about bringing them up. The two eighth-grade girls that are Campbell twins, they will be playing up for us next year as the ninth graders at Harbor, so we're excited about our future and looking forward to continuing to grow young ladies.
Please welcome from your state runner-up basketball team, Coach Price and the Springdale Bulldogs.
I picked the strong one here to hold the trophy. Couldn't do it. Well, thank you for having us. We had a, really, our claim to fame was having a, you know, a big run late in the season and in the state tournament. We fell short of one of our goals. We wanted to win conference championship. We, you know, got third there, but come to find out, that was a pretty good seed for us. We had some good matchups, and we knew, you know, whatever seed we were in the tournament, we were capable of winning it. I think we were twenty-five and nine on the year, so we'd had a lot of success and a lot of confidence, so it was just kind of getting everybody on that same page. I brought my seniors here today, and they were kind of the mental stability that our team needed, so I'm very proud of them, and, you know, we had what a lot of people would consider a young team, and those were, some of our younger guys got a lot of the publicity, but these were the guys that came to work every single day and provided kind of the blueprint for everybody else, so extremely proud of them, and I've got an awesome staff, and, you know, that's what success is, is you got a little bit of talent, you got a little bit of size, got a great staff, great leadership, and we were able to have a special run. Came up a little bit short in the championship game, but it was exciting to get there, and I think we made a lot of memories along the way that, you know, that not many people get a chance to do, so I'm glad we could provide that for our young men.
When's the last time Springdale played in a state championship?
It was fifteen, twenty fifteen, I believe. No, 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 twenty thirteen, fourteen. That's my statistician. Got all that down. Twenty fourteen, that's right.
And you were an assistant coach at that point?
I was the head coach at George Junior High and on the high school staff, yep. Little different. You get to just take it all in, in that first seat, it seems to move a little faster, so... But I'll be better equipped for the next time.
You guys did great.
Thank you.
Fun to watch. Fun round to watch.
Yep, absolutely. Anybody want to say anything?
You're giving them a choice? You just have to...
Here we go, all right.
Hello, my name is Tevin Take. I've been with Springdale for three years now, actually. Growing up, I used to watch Springdale play, you know, ever since about seventh grade, I'll look up to people like Tyler Perry and Tyler Garrett, Austin Garrett, just like all schools. I was so excited to be a high school player, and now I'm going to graduate, I'm a senior now. Think I'm done in...
Nineteen days? What are you going to do after you graduate?
I'm going to go to college and play basketball.
Where are you going, do you know yet?
I haven't made a decision yet.
You've got a few options. Good. Good to have options. Good job. Good job. Way to step up.
My name is Take Sheckers. First of all, I want to thank the man above for blessing us with the opportunity to be here today. I didn't come prepared for this, too. But, yeah, I want to thank the coaches for the dedication, and my teammates for being here, and, yeah, thank you.
My name's Carson Tegness. This is my second year at Springdale. I actually transferred from Harbor, and I came here my junior year. I didn't transfer on time, so I had to sit out, had to play JV, and this is my first year varsity, and I just want to thank my parents for that decision, my coaches and teammates for believing in me, and, you know, it all feels surreal, being, you know, going to state, but we couldn't get the job done, but we still went.
My name is Marcus Prometti. I've been going to Springdale for the past three years, and I basically started whenever Coach O first got the job here, and it was an amazing experience to be able to go through this with him and all these years, and Coach Price, for all the things he's done for me, and my teammates, and all the coaches that have been throughout the years. It was an unbelievable experience to go through something like this, and I couldn't ask for a better run.
Any of y'all's parents here? I'd be surprised if your mom and dad aren't here. Thank y'all for being here. Congratulations. We'll be watching next year. Get in there, guys. Come on. Guys, don't smile. It's fun when everybody's smiling. That's great. Okay, where is Coach Stellet? I want to come up to the podium and set up. Coach Stellet's been with the district for 12 years?
12 years.
12 years. And this year, he was honored a couple of times. One from, well, I'll just read it. It's Award of Merit from the AAA. Wayne Stellet, this award is presented in recognition of dedication given to the Arkansas High School Athletic Directors Association inside the field of interscholastic activities. Coach, you want to talk to them about what that award means and why you were recognized?
Well, I think sometimes everybody else has the award already, so okay, we'll give it to Stellet. It is nice to be recognized by your peers for what you've done within your district and with your coaches. And so I'm honored by to receive this from my fellow aides. That was very special for me.
Then not one, but two, right? In outstanding recognition of outstanding leadership and meritorious achievement, interscholastic athletic administration, this is the 2023 State Award of Merit presented to Coach Wayne Stellet. I don't know what RAA means. Do you or will I put you on the spot?
Athletic directors can take different courses. You can get a RAA, you can get a CAA, a CMA. And so that's just the first one. I've got the paperwork done for everything else. I just didn't take the test.
Oh, okay. Anyway, he's been recognized for the State Award of Merit from the NIAA. And so I'd like to recognize tonight Coach Stellet for his achievements over the last 12 years and his contributions. When I think about all the work he and I have even done together over the last 10 years and the work that you have provided the opportunity for us to do, when you think about the new track that's at Springdale High that people said couldn't be done, it's done. When you think about the new arena that's coming out of the ground with the education wing, people said that couldn't be done, it's on the way to being done. You've got baseball and softball at both high schools. Said we didn't have space to do that, now we do. We have a dance and wrestling arena over at Harbor High School and future changes at Springdale High. That's a lot of work. Quite frankly, any one of those projects could be a major achievement in one's career. This board, this administration, and Coach Stellet leading it along with Jeremy White and the maintenance team and the principals and all of the teams that are around that contributed to that effort is really Herculean. You know, we all are kind of used to that work because it's just what we do. But truly, when I step back and think about the work and the effort that's gone in and the decisions that you've been labored and tasked to make in order to have that happen is really quite phenomenal. And so having Coach Stellet thinking about, you know, retirement potentially in the winter times and, you know, that's not a good time. And the connections he has and the deep roots he has to Springdale. And he has a lot of energy and gas in the tank. And so we're excited that he's going to transition to a part-time role, but really support our district. We know that in this world of choice, people choose schools for a lot of different reasons. Sometimes it's athletics, sometimes it's activities that are very important to them. Sometimes it's band, cheer, choir, wrestling, whatever it is. And Coach Stellet's going to be part of our team to help foster that through because quite frankly, funding's going to be hard to find. And so he's going to help us do that. And so I'd like to thank him for continuing his career and appreciate his friendship, and I know you all do too. And I just want to recognize Coach Stellet for his contribution. So thank you, Coach Stellet. Mr. President?
Yes?
We have Josh and Brittany. They're, Josh, you and Brittany, mind to come on up? Talk about East Conference winners all the time.
These two, these two have...
Getting to be a normal thing with you guys.
Yeah, so I meant to look at statistics comparing last year to this year, but the day got away with me. And I think the next slide, yeah, has the data from this year's conference. So over 230 schools attended East Conference. Just some statistics and some numbers on that. Out of the 15 competitions, Springdale schools walked away with seven of the 15. Yeah, so super proud of our kid. One of the three Best of Conference awards, three Judges' Choice awards, 15% of the students recognizes different makers in their community. And then East recognizes three schools for Founder's Awards and three schools for Cornerstone Awards. Josh will explain those in a moment. And we had one of each of those. I think it's also just really important to say that not only do those awards represent recognition for our students, they represent projects that kids are working on with people in our community, nonprofits, industry leaders, getting real-world experience, benefiting the students in our school and our wider community. And so it's like a double win. It's a double win to see our students serving and also to be recognized for their work. And we understand that this number that we walk away with last year was close represents a broad spectrum of support that we have from our administration and our buildings, our district administration, our parents, our community at large, the investment that everyone in Springdale has made to our East programs. And this data just shows that it's working. One of my students who's going to talk tonight was a student at Westwood Elementary and has brought that experience over to us. So we're just so blessed to have that movement of kids that they have the opportunity to start in third grade and progress all the way up to high school.
And just to kind of talk about that top statistic, you know, our kids represented over 125 community projects in our area. That easily could represent over 100 community partners, just at the East Initiative in Springdale Public Schools. That's a big number. I would love to collect that list of clients because it's an impressive list. If you look at the fingerprint of Springdale, a lot of the business leaders and a lot of the key names in Springdale are playing a part of that as well. The next slide, we'll talk about two of our most recognized programs this year. You know, we had 235, 240 programs in the area come down to Hot Springs, and they choose six. They choose six. Three to be overall Founder's winners as well as three Cornerstone winners. And so we're going to hear from two of those programs today. Sonora Middle School, who's facilitated by Derek Rashford. They won their third Founder's Award, third Founder's Award in three, or six years. That's, you can't win it back to back. It doesn't happen. And so that's rare, rarefied air. And we're going to listen to seventh grader Kate Eby.
So I am Kate Eby. I am a seventh grade student and I go to Sonora Middle School. And as Mr. Brody just said, we won the Founder's Award. The Founder's Award is given to the East program. That shows the most student growth, community collaboration, and project sophistication. Our team has definitely shown all of those throughout the year, and we've worked super hard. East means something to every single one of those people. We're not just there to be there. We're there to help our community. East shows us compassion, and they show us life skills that some people don't have, but we are able to learn how to have them while we're in East. It helps you with every aspect of your life. And it's just truly an amazing experience to be able to go there and know that the reason that you are there is because you have compassion for your community. And so it's just a great place to be and a great place to just express yourself and just get away from everything, but help others while you're getting away. So it's just a really great experience, and it's a great honor to be able to win this award.
How long have you been in East?
I have been in East since second grade, so...
Six years?
Six years? It's been a while. But yeah, it's been a while.
Awesome. And then another school, Westwood Elementary received the... Kate, don't go anywhere.
Don't run off.
Westwood Elementary won the Cornerstone Award, which Kate talked about, the three sections that make a Founder's Award better. You've got growth, community, sophistication. They excel in project sophistication, which one thing I want to note is I feel like anytime you receive one of these awards, it's really a two-year body of work. It's back-to-back years of really showing out what you can do in the East program. They're led by Lynette Curzon, who, the last two years, you've just had some fantastic projects. We're going to hear from their program as well.
Hi, my name is Gabriela Caranza. I'm a fifth grade student at Westwood Elementary East. 2023 marks an exciting year at Westwood East. We are celebrating 10 years of making positive changes in our school, city, state, and beyond, as well as receiving the East Cornerstone Award for sophistication and innovation. Our goal is to continue to highlight our success through the years as well as build upon what we have achieved and take it to the next level. One area Westwood East is most proud of is self-solution-driven projects that help our friends that live with disabilities. Kaylee, tell us about some of our favorites.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Rodriguez. And some of our favorite disability projects are Ludi's Learning Board. Ludi began learning Braille by matching a 3D-printed shape with the first letter of the teacher's name in Braille. A cut above. A preschool child with a hand disability was able to cut with scissors with a modified, that were modified with a special 3D design. Wee little wheels. Children with disabilities do not receive a wheelchair until three years old. East students made a small wheelchair out of easy-to-find items that solved this problem. Walk this way. East students adjusted the seat of a walker so our client could sit on the seat without slipping off. They 3D-printed a custom piece that raised the seat level so their client could sit safely and take a much-needed rest. Today, as well as the last 10 years, have been remarkable, making a difference in our school, community, and beyond, in our very own Westwood East classroom.
All right. And lastly, Julia, she is a former Westwood East student and even mentioned, I believe, in one of those projects, is something that she worked on while she was there. Julia had an amazing year. I'm not going to get very emotional, but I will say Julia is the last of her four siblings who have gone through our program. And I feel very invested in her and her family. And the growth that I have seen them able to make through our District East program, Julia's going to talk about her role on leadership. And she also won a conference award against two high school programs, I have to say. So I was very impressed with their work.
Hello, I'm Julia Penaflo. I'm a seventh grader at Helen Tyson Middle School, and this is my sixth year in East. This year, I was selected into the leadership team as an ambassador. The leadership team helps run conference and works to make it a better experience for all. I had to face new challenges and responsibilities in this position. I had to learn and practice professional skills such as teamwork and communication. I got to work with fellow East students from all across Arkansas. My favorite part of this experience had to be being there at conference to help people and just like be there for others. And along with the leadership team this year, my project, we won the virtual reality competition for our Day 60 tour of the Fayetteville Public Library's New Center for Innovation.
I think that's all we have, unless you have any questions for the students.
That's awesome. Congratulations for all that. And we'll expect to see you back here again next year, right?
That's the goal. I think we all have. We're all working on stuff already. And we're just grateful for this opportunity to share because I think we could be here every month. The kids are doing wonderful things, and we're grateful for your support.
That's awesome, parents. Where are the parents at? There we go. Congratulations to all of y'all. Good job, everybody. I'm going to introduce Ms. Fink, but I think probably don't need her to do that. Most people know Michael Tapie. Michael Tapie, come on up. We're going to talk about Hirobotics.
All right. Good evening, board. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Michael Tapie, and I get the immense honor and privilege to direct the Hirobotics program at Helstrom Middle School. I should also say, I also am very thankful to get to coach it alongside Josiah Riplemeyer. He's one of our GT facilitators at Helstrom. He had some family stuff come up right at the last minute, so he wasn't able to be here tonight, but he very much would love to be here. So before I talk about these students that you hear, that are here before you specifically tonight, I do want to just acknowledge our entire program. We have expanded again this year, and we now have three teams composing the Hirobotics program, the red, gold, and silver teams. So we are going to specifically recognize the red and gold teams in just a moment. But for the entirety of our program history, we have never not made it to the state competition. The silver team, even though it was their very first year existing, continued that great tradition of excellence. Nine sixth and seventh graders on that school, most of them rookie members, two of them returners, did an incredible job at both our qualifiers and state competition. We are really, really proud of them. But to specifically recognize the red and gold teams here, the gold team, I'll talk about them first, had a great, great year, won a project award at our qualifiers competition, and then at state, got invited to compete against teams from all over the world at the Western Edge Invitational in Long Beach, California. So they'll be heading there in May. And I actually let the gold team talk for a moment. I have Claire Aguayo and Mia Yek are two seventh grade returners who were on the gold team last year. Mia's going to talk a little bit about their project because we do both a big research project and robot. And then Claire's going to talk about Hirobotics as a whole.
Our project is called the WET System, which stands for Water Energy Tower. And we hook it up to a source of electricity, such as a solar panel, and it can store energy for people in need. It's more of a service thing instead of to earn money. So it pumps up the water and stores it in a bucket. And whenever you need to release that energy, you can turn a valve and it will go through a generator to generate electricity.
Hirobotics is really important to me. Over, I've spent about two years on this team now, this being my second year. And over just these two years, I've already learned so many new skills. I've gained a lot more confidence recently. Before, I was really nervous about even just standing up here, which I probably wouldn't have been able to do before. Along that, I've also learned a lot about teamwork and working with all my fellow teammates, which something is, that's something I also never really worked on because I've always found myself to be trying to be more independent. But I've learned that working with a team really helps.
And then... And then I also want to recognize the red team. For the second year in a row and the third time in program history, we are the state champions, and we'll be going to Houston for the World Championships for olive first. There are about 30,000 people that descend on the Houston Convention Center. We will compete against 108 teams from about 64 different nations, and we'll be representing, we will be the sole representative of the state of Arkansas there for first-lega league. So to talk a little bit about the red team, we have Parker Porbeck, also a second-year member of the red team, and a former member of the Younglings. And then Mason Hughes, who's also a seventh grader, but first year on the red team here.
All right. So we created a product called TED, and TED stands for the Energy Downspout. So basically, we put TED inside a gutter downspout system so that once it rains, all the water runs through TED and makes power. You might think it's as simple as just putting some water generators in there and calling it good, but we have a system called a bell siphon that allows us to store the water up over time so that we can make more power unless, like, there's a small rain. It doesn't just trickle by the generator. A bell siphon is a system that uses atmospheric pressure to create a vacuum that releases the water once it reaches a certain point. TED matters because it's a brand-new way to impact people in ways they haven't been impacted before. Thank you.
Hirobotics has taught me a lot of life skills that I can use later on in life. But there's one thing, or two things, but... but there's one thing, or two things, but one is, this isn't much of a life skill as much as, it's kind of a life skill, but, I'm sorry. So, coding. I've been in, I was introduced into coding into around second grade, I think, around there, and I've just been so into it as soon as I started coding. And then this was, I never really had a way to practice coding or decode and code actually an item to do something, and this hero robotics was the perfect opportunity for me to do that, because it's, you code a robot. And that's just, it's been super fun for me to do that. It's made my year, I could say. And then also, meeting new people. I have two people I want to say, Beck Thorne and Hayes Hayme. I had no idea who they were at the beginning of this year, and I've, they've come to be some of my closest friends that I've ever had, and I've only known them for nine months-ish, and it's just, it's been a great time.
I know it's been a lot of awards, but I want to recognize all these students, because as both teams to book to, this is very much a team effort. It could not happen without all 10 members on each team. And there are a couple members missing. I want to assure you, the red team is not all guys. There are four awesome ladies who are not able to be here tonight. So, I'm going to just recognize them in a quick, like I said, Mason Hughes, Parker Porbeck, this is Kate and Garrison, this is Hayes Hayme, Beck Thorne, Will Scaife, and we are missing Breland Drummonds, Parker Forster, Addie Penzo, and Charlotte Mills. That was it. Just want to make sure I wasn't forgetting someone accidentally. And then on the gold team, we have Claire Aguayo, Mia Yek, Jasmine Rivera, Sandy Vicente, Joshua Martin, Kylan Russell, Tristan Lee, and Carson Adams, and we are unfortunately not, we don't have London Goff with us tonight, because it is her birthday, so happy birthday, London. So, any questions for us? Oh, and I'm so sorry, man, that's embarrassing. And Giovanni Medina, thank you, is also on the gold team. Any questions for us?
What is Houston?
Houston is a week from today. We start heading down there.
Some of us are driving, some of us are flying.
Those of us driving are a little jealous, but we have some stuff, so I'll take that.
So, these projects that they're working on, they sound, you know, way beyond me, but are they, do they have, like, commercial applications, or these things that might actually come into reality on a commercial level at some point, or?
Yeah. You go for it. If we have time, I will absolutely let them, do we have time?
Hold it down so we can hear you. Um, right now, we're working on selling TED, trying to get a patent, and we have a commercial.
So, there've been, like, companies that reached out to you that want this technology, or not yet?
Not yet.
Okay. But that's the goal?
Mm-hmm.
Eventually? Yeah, get that patent nailed down.
The gold team's goal is a little bit different. The gold team has, does anyone want to talk about it? You want to, Mia? Go for it.
Our goal with the WET System is to help developing nations where people don't have access to electricity and could really use that to help themselves get an education. When it's dark outside, they may need a light to work by and to, like, make a living for themselves.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for having us, we appreciate it.
Oh, your parents?
There are a lot.
Parents, there you go. Congratulations, everybody. You guys have fun at your competitions.
Brilliant. When you hear the kids, the, we adults don't sound so smart, kids sound dangerous.
Okay, I'd like to invite Mr. Donnell, there he is, to present the Social Worker of the Year. Where is Brittany at? Brittany, can you come on up here?
Tonight, it gives me great pleasure to recognize Ms. Brittany Helms as the 2022-2023 Springdale School District Social Worker of the Year. So, Ms. Helms currently serves at Sonora Middle School and Sonora Elementary, and there was a piece in here where someone who nominated her said it best. They said, "Brittany is a perfect example of the Springdale social worker vision and mission. She works diligently with our students, families, staff, and community every day to ensure that they are given the best supports and resources. Not only is she an advocate for students and families, she is also an advocate for all, and I really do mean all. She is always in the lead when it comes to her role and always makes herself available for anyone who needs help. We love Ms. Helms." We are so fortunate to have Ms. Helms on our social worker team, and tonight, I couldn't be prouder of her tonight. It gives me an extreme pleasure to tell you that she is our, she has been recognized as our district's social worker of the year. Ms. Brittany.
So, I asked Damon if I needed to prepare anything, and he told me no. So, I am honored to receive this. I started with Springdale Schools last year, and it was my first year. I decided that to do a pretty big shift in my career from what I was doing previously, because obviously, I'm a mom, and I thought that it would be a good idea for the work hours. But then I learned that it was probably one of the best decisions that I've ever made, because not only have I found community in Springdale schools, but then also, I've grown as a person, and I know that I have, and I can see it as a person and as a professional, and so I just, I want to say thank you for allowing me to be able to be here and to do what I enjoy and love. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to thank our community partners. We have several here tonight that I'd like to recognize. First, for Cheap Sleep, they have been phenomenal partners with us for any of our families that have a need for bedding or mattresses. And it's Mr. Zach Fisher and Mr. Ryan Fisher here. Come on up, guys. They have been outstanding partners with our social workers and our counselors, and if any of our families need anything, they are just there for, to support them, and I'd just like to recognize both these men tonight for their generosity and what they do for our students and families. So, thank you very much. I'd also like to thank Ms. Michelle Graham, and if you don't know Michelle Graham, I think I saw her here someplace, right here, Ms. Michelle Graham with Cargill Foods. We started this partnership this year, and Michelle said, "What can I do?" I mean, she is, she's a go-getter. And I'll just tell you this, we had a real need to feed our students, volunteers, and our adult volunteers at our food giveaways, and I'm just going to tell you, I'm going to go back to the food giveaway, because the food was so good the first time, when we were all like, "Did you eat the food?" I mean, like, it was great. They brought in taco bars, I mean, like, they had, the kids had a blast with it, and we want to thank you for that. That is wonderful for doing that. Very, thank you. Arvis Bank is a spectacular partner with us as well. Arvis donated a lot, some equipment this year for us that helped out a lot. I think Kent is here somewhere, Williamson, right here. Kent has been an outstanding partner of the Springdale School District for years and years and years, and we want to thank Mr. Kent Williamson for that as well. Also, Encore Building Products is a new partner with us this year. They partnered with Leadership Springdale, we'll talk about that just in a minute. They partnered with us for building supplies, where we were able to build some picnic tables and some planters, and Benjamin is a, if you want something built, I just got to tell you this, Benjamin right here can build anything. I mean, this guy is amazing. I think we built three picnic tables in an hour and a half. Yeah, it was, it was amazing, from rough lumber to picnic tables. It was pretty amazing. So, tonight, Travis Foltz couldn't be here, but we wanted to recognize Encore Building Products just the same. Stone Mill Bread, there's a special story here. I've known Mr. Dancler for many, many years, and I think he's here tonight. Dan, are you here tonight, right here? Dan is the owner of Stone Mill Bread, and I'm always looking to build a partnership, so one day, I just said, "Hey, you got any extra bread?" Because our families could really use that, and I'm telling you, he stepped up to the plate. We have at least, we have bread every week to where we're packing it in food bags and sending that out to families, and I want you to know how special that is when you get a food bag to get actually a loaf of bread, and not just a loaf of bread, but what? A loaf of Stone Mill Bread. So, I'm just going to tell you, it's been an amazing partnership, and we really thank you, Mr. Dancler, for all that you do for Springdale Schools. Bimbo Breads has also been a great partner with bread. They also provide bread for us as well, and tonight, Mr. Peyton Squires could not be here, but I wanted to recognize their efforts as well. So, thank you, Bimbo Breads, for all that you do for Springdale Schools as well. Samaritan Community Center, is Brian Armelovich here? I didn't see him. Brian has been spectacular. We've had a partnership now for many, many years. I think we're right at 50,000 snack packs, I'm going to say that again, 50,000 snack packs just this year alone. That equates, and I may get this wrong, you can correct me, that equates to, if you want to know what that's really like, what Samaritan Community Center does for Springdale Schools, is about $16,000 a month for snack packs, and I want you to know, it's a huge piece of support for our students. So, thank you, Samaritan Community Group, Brian Armelovich, for helping us in providing those snacks for kids. We very much appreciate you. Springfield Chamber of Commerce, well, I saw Rhonda here somewhere. Come on up here, Rhonda. I'm just going to tell you this, a little secret. Who's been on the Leadership Springdale in Springdale? Okay, so Rhonda told me not to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. This is the best Springdale leadership team she's ever had. Right, Rhonda? Rhonda and I have really become good buddies, and I'm going to tell you, I've had a blast. It's the best experience of my life, being on Leadership Springdale, and we want to say thank you for Springfield Chamber of Commerce and the Leadership Springdale Group for all that they do to support Springdale Schools. It's been wonderful. Absolutely. All right, this one is close to my heart right here. We had a student that reached out, his name is Pierce Craddock, he couldn't be here tonight, but I'm going to tell you, he reached out and said, "My dad and I and our troop has collected a bunch of food, and we'd like to bring it to the pantry." And I'm telling you, it was a truckload of food. That led into, "Is there anything here that you need?" And I said, "Well, we'd like a sign out here by the road." I really didn't think much about that, and he came back, I showed Dr. Cleveland the plan today, he came back, and his troop seven is going to come back and build a sign for the Treehouse Pantry out by the road, and Jeremy White and I were talking about that today, and it is absolutely a very cool thing when a student finds that kind of service project, where it's going to be his Eagle Scout project, and he's going to do that at the Treehouse Pantry, which is very cool. Very, very neat thing. Cramalot, great partner as well. They've donated equipment this year to the Springdale students and families, and we wanted to recognize them as well. Jason Lynn could not be here tonight, but they, just the same, we wanted to recognize them and let you know how much we appreciate them. Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints donated literally thousands of pounds of food this year to the Treehouse Pantry, and that was Kerry Cannon. He could not be here tonight either, but we wanted to also recognize that organization and what they mean for students and families in Springdale. And then also, Apple Seeds, you don't hear much about Apple Seeds, but I'm going to tell you, each week, we have Janet Hornberger here, who coordinates the Treehouse Pantry, and they donate every week of fresh produce for students and families in Springdells, and we're able to pack that into feed and read bags and give that out to families each week. And then the last three here, three of our biggest partners here as well, Lindsey Russell could not attend tonight as well, but Northwest Arkansas Food Bank is just hundreds of thousands of pounds of food, non-perishable and perishable food items that they donate to students and families. And then also Walmart, Lisa Southern is an absolutely fantastic partner with us. With Walmart, hundreds of thousands of pounds of food, we want to say thank you to them as well. And then we have Pat Ford here from Tyson Foods right here. Pat has been an outstanding partner with Springdale Schools for as long as I can remember. The day one on this job, Pat and I were talking on the phone, and I'll just say that all of this really removes those barriers from a student's life. So, if a kid doesn't have a bed to sleep on, can they learn? It's pretty hard, right? They don't have food in their belly, and they go to school and they're hungry, it's pretty hard to learn. They don't have deodorant, and they're worried about people smelling them in school, that's pretty hard to learn, too. All of these folks provide resources that remove all those barriers to that kid's learning and social success, and I want to say a huge thank you to all those community partners. And if there's anybody out there listening to this right now that wants to be a partner with Springdale Schools, we'll take you with open arms. Janet knows this, I'm looking for a partner every day. I'm like, "Hey, how can we work together?" So, I appreciate them all, and I'd say this, it's great, I know I grew up in extreme poverty, and I wish we'd had an organization like these partners here, and then also the Treehouse Pantry, and I'm just going to tell you, it's a big deal to kids. So, thank you very much. You all have any questions about that?
I do. Can you explain the Cheap Sleep that's got by?
Yes, they, I'm going to let, you explain that. Yes, come on up.
Hi, my name is Zach Fisher. I'm the owner of Cheap Sleep. My dad actually founded the company back about 15 years ago, and I took over the retail side about in 2018, well, about 2016 officially in 2018. We have expanded over the state of Arkansas and into Oklahoma as well. We have five locations as well as two distribution facilities, one in Alma and one in Fort Smith, Arkansas. I have made it our life's mission, or my life's mission, to help people in abject poverty as best I can. Growing up in poverty, it was very, very rough. Not having a bed to sleep on that was worth anything was very, very difficult. So, so far to date, we have donated about $250,000 worth of mattresses over the state of Arkansas. We plan to branch out. We are partnering with a few local missions and local churches as well, school districts as well as that, so I've just tried to make it very, very apparent that we're not just here to profit off the community, we want to give back as well. Being a younger business owner, I want to be kind of the next generation of givers that we can possibly bring to the table, so that's the story.
That's awesome. Thanks.
Well, Damon, he knows ABCs, always be closing. He's closing the deal.
That's a great report, Mr. Donnell. Those of you partners that came to the board meeting tonight, you are so appreciated. We can say it, but, you know, the idea that you help partner with us in order to get to remove the barriers, as Mr. Donnell said, for our children is honestly, is a gift. And so, just thank you. And I think I can say that I'll be happy.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. I appreciate you being here.
Legislative update, I'd like to invite Ms. Clay to the front as well. We go from having all that fun to talking about legislation. And thank you all.
Best for last.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
I know, I was just thinking, like, oh, we're about to, like, suck all the air out of this room, but here we go.
We're up from talking about servant leadership to Arkansas.
Right, but here we are. The legislature effectively wrapped up last week. They are just in recess until, I believe, the first week of May, where they will officially conclude. It's called Sign E Die. We still, I think last month, I talked about all the unknowns, and I don't have much more information here today. Dr. Cleveland's going to fill in a few little pieces that you may have heard about or read about in the newspaper, but I want to tell you kind of what we're doing with the information that we have. So, we know which acts passed, and we know what they say. We usually don't have to go through this much kind of detail, because there's not as much change happening, but due to the large and expansive amount of change, I've started working on a document that will outline every act passed, kind of a brief summary of what it does, who in our district needs that information, whether it's principals, counselors, teachers, all of the above, whether we need to update our policies, whether we're waiting on rules and regs, the effective date, so that we can look at that as a team and say, "Okay, what do we need to do?" And there's going to be some things that we can act on pretty quickly, there's going to be some things- There's going to be some things that will wait on the School Boards Association to put out policy updates, which I know they're working on very quickly. And there'll be some things that we have to wait for rules to come out. Once I get that document complete, I'm happy to share it with you. I anticipate it being kind of a live document and that we can check off and update, prioritize what needs to happen next. But it's expansive work, so the only way to really eat the elephant is start taking the first bite. That's what we're working on. I anticipate having that document at least done in the next week or so, and then we can really start grinding out what we need to do next. Dr. Cleveland, do you want to fill in on a few pieces?
Sure. Some of the large chunks that was passed in the legislature. One had to do with the Learns Act, and you are very familiar with Learns Act. 144, 145 pages worth of legislation, multiple bills basically that have been packaged into one massive bill. From that one bill, one of the significant pieces that especially staff across the state are curious about is the $50,000 requirement, that threshold. What that does for most districts is it provided by FTE, those that had students tied to them, full-time equivalents, what FTE stands for. The amount of money necessary to get to $50,000, whether you have a bachelor's degree with no experience or a doctorate degree with all kinds of experience. Many districts across the state, with the state minimum being at $36,000, receive $14,000 per person with students tied to them. In Springdale, we start at $50,282. So, in the Learns Act, they are going to supply the state $2,000 per FTE with students tied to them. What that means is per teacher. Does that mean across the state that administrators and people that don't have students tied to them aren't going to receive the money? The answer is, I don't think so. I think most school boards and superintendents are going to do the best they can to manipulate their budget for every person to have at least $2,000 more. Now, without convoluted the conversation, some districts are going to fold in their steps. You know, we have a salary schedule that's 28 steps or so, whatever, and $685 a year. Is that right? Six, eight steps? So, if you work from year one to year two, in normal times, you would have $685 more because of your experienced staff. The Learns Act pretty much does away with that requirement. So, I've looked at and visited with other superintendents across the state that said, "Hey, what are you going to do in Springdale? How's that going to look?" We're working on that. Mr. Hayes and I don't anticipate any alteration to the salary schedule as far as having steps. We think it's very important that, you know, that we continue with that, that we continue to have the $685. We do believe that we can provide a $2,000 at least increment. It may not go on the salary schedule. We may identify it as Learns Act money to identify that that's the money that comes from the state in order to pay each staff member. So, that's for 190-day contracts. Those with more than 190-day contracts, they may get the same stipend. Again, this is just us talking. We don't have a formal recommendation for you right now. We need to get to see those rules. In fact, all of us on our leadership team have applied for being at least on one of the Learns Act rules-making committees. We haven't received any information about if any of us made it or not, and we don't even know when those committees will be announced. But I know it's important for our staff and our community to understand that your will as a board, and this is what I believe, is for everyone's life to not change except for the better. So, if it's additional money, we're going to do that. If it's additional support, we're going to do that. In fact, we're going to have the buses run, the lights are going to come on. Our goal is for our staff and our kids and our families to not know that a Learns Act or anything else could disrupt their life at all. So, that's our goal, and I believe we can do that. And so, having Mr. Hayes here certainly helps, and having Ms. Stacy Hopkins here to work through the extra dollars, we're going to be okay. And that's my message. If I miss anything.
I think so. Are there any questions?
There's one thing I'd like to brag on our school board about. Our community may not know this. There was a couple of bills, in fact, three if not four bills that were pushed in legislative session to do away with how school boards are elected, the number of terms they have, and all of that. And our school board was very active in communicating with not only the people on the Senate Education Committee, the House Education Committee, but the full Senate and the full House to communicate how damaging that would be to the school boards across the state, and quite frankly, to ours, because stability is very important. History is very important. And the people that you see on this board are deeply invested in making sure, since we do have a new Learns Act, that it is implemented with fidelity and with quality, and that it supports our staff and our families. And so, most people don't know how hard you all worked, but I do. And I want to personally thank you for your dedication and your work to communicate in the right way respectfully. You guys did it in a way that I don't think anyone you communicated with felt disrespected in any way. You didn't harm, you didn't threaten, you didn't push. All you did is provide information, quality information, that was timely, that was sensitive, but was very appropriate for those folks who are making those decisions to understand how important your roles, not compensated roles, you're here. I don't know if you know that, but school board members do not get paid. In fact, it costs them every day to be a school board member, whether it's their time, their talent, or their treasure. So, that being said, you wanting to serve here is a testament of your character and in your integrity, and not everybody gets to hear that. And so, most of the time, you're fussed at, if anything. And so, this is a time for you to, for our public to know just what you do and what you give up, and we thank you for it. So, thank you.
Okay. Was there anything that you wanted to talk about in regard to legislation that we did?
Well, the only other thing I was going to mention about the Learns Act, I guess I should do it if you don't care.
It's a short time.
I didn't hear Dr. Cleveland say this, and if he did, I apologize for repeating it, but the funding of $2,000 is only available to those that are not paid with federal funds. So, we will, even though we are going to honor that for all staff members regardless, all certified staff members, the funding from the state does not include those paid with federal funds. In addition, it's a flat $2,000 a person, whether you work, have a 190-day contract or a 200-day contract or a 210, it doesn't matter, it's $2,000 per person. So, just wanted to clarify the funding on those. Oh, do you want me to talk about classified? Sure. The, one of the omissions in the Learns Act was any reference to classified salaries. And of course, we are always concerned with that piece as well, considering that makes up about 40% of our work, of our work population. So, in the school district, in the matrix, a line item was added. It's kind of nebulous in its description, but I think it's intended for classified staff members' salary increase. It's the amount of $44 a child. And when we extrapolate that out and then back it back down, we're working on that to determine how much of an increase could be given to classified staff members. The thing that's very concerning to us is that it's been repeatedly, and I mean repeatedly, reported in the news media that we were funded enough to provide each of our classified staff members a $2 an hour increase. And while we certainly don't argue that they all are deserving of that and much more, the funding of $44 per child is not sufficient for us to be able to do that. But we are going to do everything we can, as we always do, to make sure that classified staff members are also recognized as well as certified. Any questions? We probably have, I'm going to round it off to say 250, probably something like that. And, no, that would just be certified. Certified staff members, I'd say around 250. I may be a little high, but I think that's about right.
What are some examples?
Title 1, some of our pre-K, 6B, which is our sped. Title 3, which is ELL. So, yeah, we have, we have a number of those. And so, what we will need to do is work on those budgets to make sure that we can provide, which is what we do every time we give a salary increase. The point I was making is, the Learns Act has provided a stream of money for this purpose, but it does not include those individuals. But we're not going to leave them hanging high and dry.
Sure.
Any other, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Pat. We still have many more conversations, and a lot will have to deal with what you decide. So, over time. Mr. President, we've added, I want to introduce some fantastic new additions, or at least some elevations and some other. The first person I would like to welcome back is Mrs. Molly Brock. I'll let you, let Molly tell the story, but I just wanted to tell you that when she left, I told her I'm going to get you back.
You did.
We did.
You did. You just said that. Good evening. Thank you, Board, for letting me be here tonight, giving me the opportunity to return to Springdale. You know, the commitment level that Springdale's committed to the professional learning process is one that's a passion of my own. And so, I am very, very honored to have the opportunity to come and add value to Harp Elementary and just work together with them as a team to do what's best for students and for the community. So, I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm just so excited to be back, because it was gut-wrenching when I left, but I'm just beyond excited to have the opportunity to come back and serve in the community and just be, and work in whatever capacity I can to do what's best for our students and for the teachers and staff and this community. What questions do y'all have for me?
Glad to have you back. And I apologize in advance you gave me as a parent.
Oh, I'm excited. Can't wait. I really can't wait. I'm very honored to have this opportunity. You have no idea. I'm just beyond excited.
She's got a little extra work. Mr. Bowlen is retiring as well, and so she's going to work hard on trying to find a replacement for Mr. Bowlen as assistant principal. So, the all-new leadership, but since she's coming back home, she's not new to the district?
No. Right. I began my career teaching at Parson Hills. I did an internship one year at George Elementary, then was hired in the intern pool. I worked at Parson Hills as a classroom teacher, and then moved to an instructional facilitator role, and then moved to Lee Elementary as assistant principal, where I served there for 14 years. So, I've had a lot of, the East Springdale has been my home, has always been my home, and I just could not be more excited to come back and hopefully add value to the district and to Harp Elementary, so.
You're taking it back. Have our lessons.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Carrie Ferris. Ms. Ferris, if you don't mind. Dr. Annette Thompson is retiring from Jim D. Rollins Elementary School, and Ms. Ferris was a clear choice, and we're happy with her. She's been, you've been at Walker for nine years?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven years, yeah.
It feels like walking.
Fast years. Thank you so much for having me today. I am Carrie Ferris, and I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you as the new principal of Rollins. Jody has joined me today. She's going to be my partner over there, and so I appreciate her sticking with me tonight and hanging with me, and she's already been a huge support. She and Dr. Thompson have already reached out and given me lots of support to help me get ready to make that transition over. I look forward to learning more about new and innovative strategies and getting to work alongside a really amazing staff. I got to meet them this morning, and they were just so welcoming, and so I'm just, I'm very excited about this opportunity. I am a Springdale girl. I started at Lee, and Molly and I had that in common there. I started at Lee, I went K-6 there, and then 7, 8, 9 at Southwest, and then graduated from Springdale High School well before there was a Harbor High School, back in the 90s. I did teach in Conway. I went to UCA and taught down there for 14 years and was a facilitator there, and then I got to move back home. And so, I was given the opportunity to be at Walker for the past seven years after I came back home, and I look forward to staying at home and continuing my journey here with Springdale. Do you have any questions for me? All right. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. I'd like to invite Ms. Stacy Hopkins to the podium. Those of you who don't, she's kind of quiet. She's not like Mr. Hayes. She's pretty quiet, but she's going to come out of that. We're going to get to know her a lot better. But Ms. Stacy has been hired as our new CFO, and she is very skilled. I can, I'll let you tell, or have her tell you about her, but we're so pleased that she's going to stay with us, and she is a rock star in her own field. And only recently have I come to understand that, so I'm so excited to have you with us to be on our leadership team.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. Thank you, Board. I'm very thrilled to be here tonight. My background is in public accounting. I was a partner in a firm down in South Arkansas for a number of years, had my own private, or public practice in Cersei, Arkansas, for quite a long time, and decided in 2013, well, in 2011, that I was ready to sell my business and retire and be a stay-at-home mom for a couple of years. Didn't like that a whole lot. Loved being a mom, that's not it. I just don't like not working. And so, had an opportunity kind of out of left field to go to Pangburn School District to be the business manager, and later worked in CFO position. I've told this many times, I have come to discover that school finance is my favorite. Fell into it by accident, have loved it ever since. Met Mr. Hayes not long after I started working for Pangburn School District. He was one of my instructors for CASBO. And have said many times since then that I always wanted to work for Mr. Hayes and learn from him, because I do think he is the best finance person in school business in the state of Arkansas. Felt that for a long time.
You already have the job.
I know. I'm voting him out. But I do believe it's true. You'll hear it when you go to a lot of different conferences. A lot of us feel that way, but I always have aspired to come to Springdale. Y'all are the best school district in the state. I've always thought that. And so, this is kind of a dream come true for me, and I'm very excited to be here. Have enjoyed having the last nine months to kind of get to know all the ladies down in the basement. They work really hard. They're rock stars. And I'm glad that I'm getting to be here now to be, work with Mr. Hayes through the end of this school year to be prepared for next year. So, thank you. Any questions?
Looking forward to work with you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, it's me again. I do have a couple sets of policies to talk to you about. They are linked in your agenda, linked in the slide deck, I believe, however you're looking at them. The first are certified policies and instruction policies. Most of these are just cleanup. You'll remember that it's been a process, but we're working to transition all of the policies to the ASBA model policies. These certified policy updates reflect changes that were recommended by ASBA. One of the great things that now we have these changes, now that we're on the model policies, when the changes come out, they're very easy to just incorporate into our policies, and that's what you see here. Things like changing the acronyms, because DESI changed from Apple to RPEP. It's the same thing, just a new acronym. There is one new policy regarding insubordination and sexual harassment, and then the others are technical changes. On the instruction policy, this was a change that Dr. Smith and I actually worked on several years ago to change the policy for graduation requirements to require that students take math every semester. At the time, there was some rationale behind that. Where Dr. Cleveland's vision is moving us towards workforce education, it now makes more sense to pull that back to how the policy was before, to require students to take math every year rather than each semester. The reasoning for that is there are different ways to get that math credit. You saw earlier the conversation about technical math, that you can do that without taking a math each semester. Also, concurrent credit courses allow you to get a full credit without a full year of work. You can do that in the semester. So, the ask is to change that back to how it was a few years ago. I have shared these certified policy updates with the Certified PPC. They did not have any objections to them, as they're mostly cleanup. I did invite Ms. Woodward to be here if she had any comments. She indicated that she didn't have any comments on the policies, but I do believe that's the case. She indicated that she didn't have any comments on the policies, but I do believe DESI is here. Oh, I'm so sorry. Hi. Do you want to make any comments on policies? I'm so sorry. I didn't even see you. Okay, so the ask on the certified policies, which is previous slide, I can use the clicker. This big sign says, "Please use this clicker," and I'm not doing it, would be for final approval on these so that they would go into effect for our certified employees beginning on July 1st. Do you have any questions?
Board, I need a motion to move forward on that one.
Go ahead.
Motion to move forward on the proposed policy cleanup changes as stated. All right, we have a motion by Mr., oh, a second, by Mr. Emerson to approve the certified personnel policy updates and changes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? There we go.
Okay, the second set of policies is more informational, but I do need a motion and action at this time, would be to approve the classified personnel policies as proposals at this point, so basically draft. I've met with the Classified Personnel Policy Committee a couple of times already and will continue to do so before we bring them back to you for final approval. Just working through a few questions that they have, making sure we get them exactly what lines up kind of with what our Springdale practice is. But the big chunk of policies that we're working to transition to the ASBA model policies this year is the classified personnel policies. I anticipate bringing those back to you next month, it may be the month after, and I'll share any feedback with you that we've gotten from the Classified PPC, and I'll invite the Classified PPC president to come and make comments as well at that time. So the ask for today is to approve the classified personnel policy updates as proposals. Do you have any questions?
All right, Board, I think we need a motion for this one to move forward.
I make a motion that we approve the proposals for the classified personnel policy changes. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Creek, a second by Mrs. Cook, to approve the proposals for classified personnel policies. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Well, I'm back again, Board. I just want to follow up on what Dr. Cleveland was saying earlier about Ms. Hopkins. When I found out that Stacy was wanting to move to this part of the state, I had been talking with Dr. Cleveland, telling him I really needed some help, I felt like overseeing ESER, because as y'all know, it's millions of dollars, and it's federal dollars, and I didn't want the district to be embarrassed in any way over some minute thing that perhaps we had not followed if an audit were to occur down the road. So when I found out Stacy was interested in relocating to this area, I immediately went to Dr. Cleveland and said, "Would it be okay if I reached out to her? I would love to have her on our team because she's excellent." So he gave me permission to do so. She has come in, and she's done a wonderful job. I feel so much better now about all of our documentation, making sure that we're doing everything the way the federal government wants us to. I have no doubt that she's going to serve the Springdale School District and the employees of the district, as well as the students and families, on a very high level, and you're going to be so pleased. You're going to say, "Kelly who?" in no time. All right, quit shaking your head. I'm not gone yet.
I just hope she can tell jokes.
Well, I'll help her. I'll help. I'll come back.
Gosh.
I'll feed her.
Improv night.
What?
Improv night.
Improv, yeah, yeah. Board, I have a couple of items for you this evening that I would like for you to consider. The first one is the 2324 special ed 6B budget. This isn't the final budget. It's preliminary budget. We have to do this each year, and the reason being is so that we can be reimbursed for expenditures over the summer that we expend out of 6B. They require us to have a board-approved budget since the new year starts on July 1st before they will be able to reimburse us. So this is the preliminary budget. The actual budget that we will submit in September will be higher than this because we will have carryover funds from this year that we will incorporate into that. This is pretty much what you've approved for the last several years. We spend almost all of these funds, well, all of these funds, on salaries and benefits to support our students with disabilities, and so I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, Board, if we don't have any questions, we do need a motion to move forward on this one.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed budget for 2023.
Who's a second on that? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Ramos, a second by Mr. Bell to approve 6B budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. The next item that I have for you this evening are the March 2023 financials. You know, we're three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year and more than that through the school year. So on this report, you will notice that the revenue still is lagging just a little bit. I'm not overly concerned with that. I think it'll all come out in the wash by the time we're at the end of June. At least that's what I'm banking on. So I think it'll be fine. I'm not concerned about that at all. And then on our expenditure side, the percentages there are more in line with what I've been used to seeing the last several years. They've been a little lower at this time of year, or actually for the entire year, partially because of COVID and being able to divert some expenditures to ESER. So I think we're in wonderful shape. I don't anticipate any problems, so we have to answer any questions you might have, though. Just as a reminder, let me tell you one more thing, just as a reminder, you did vote last semester to provide an incentive to all of our employees, $1,200 to be paid in November and $1,200 to be paid in May, so that will be coming up next month. Once again, on behalf of our employees, thank you for the recognition of their service.
Yeah, with your motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 2023 financial statement.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Emerson, a second by Mrs. Creek, to approve the March 2023 financial statements. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, Mr. White's up.
Okay, I've got a construction update. So Springdale High, they're getting windows and doors in on the main arena. This is the, they're getting ready to pour the slab for the new locker rooms, so that'll actually be the locker rooms on the south side of the arena. And then that's the academic wing and the elevator. They're getting ready to pour all of that area, and then they're already starting to put steel up on that second floor academic wing. The roofs are on, so they're making a lot of progress there. They've done a lot of the interior CMU on this project. Here's just a different view of the academic wing. And then here's the inside. So this is in the arena, so that'll be bleachers and everything, so it's starting to take shape on the inside. There's locker rooms and stuff underneath, so they've made a lot of progress on the inside of this project as well. You guys have any questions on Springdale High? The weather's cooperated, so they've been able to make a lot of progress on all of our projects. Central, they're getting ready to start pouring some of the second floor, so that's why they have all these jacks in place. Those will come out once the concrete's been poured and is cured. There's a view, they've got a lot of steel up over at Central. They're continuing to put steel up every day. And then on the first floor, they're putting in a lot of the mechanical, all the electric, plumbing. So there's another view, you know, there's a lot of steel work going on at Central. This is actually, they're starting to do the road cut and put in the retention pond, and this is actually for the Emma connection. So they're cutting that road in and getting ready to do all that work. So that's nice to see. We've been waiting a long time for that. That was everything at Central. Do you guys have any questions on Central's project?
Is the Emma cut through going to be done at the same time as our school? Is it all going to kind of work together?
We were told at one time the Emma Street would be up and running by the time school started. I don't know if that's still, I don't know if that's still the plan, but I mean, I think it's possible. It looks like it's pretty far along. Okay, at Southwest, this is the weight room, so they've got the HVAC hooked up, the electric's been changed over to the new service. This is a fire lane. They've been pouring that. It's going to go back to the south. It's just, it'll be a sidewalk unless there's an emergency, and the fire trucks will use it to get into that facility. So the interior, they've got the paint done, they're doing a lot of the finishes in there. We have got the commercial washer and dryer and all the weight systems at our warehouse, so that stuff will start going in probably next week. And then they still have a few more utilities to get hooked up before we take possession of it, but we'll have kids in there pretty soon, before the school year's over. We've just got to get safe paths to get them into it and out of it, back to the main school. So they have, most of the steel is up at Southwest. They're doing some of the awning work and stuff, and then that crew will be out of there. That's the second floor. They've got a lot of the concrete's done, and it's been, they're starting to polish it. They were there today polishing that concrete, getting it down to a pretty fine grit, and then they'll do a final polish later. And this is a view from the second floor, looking at the learning stairs, so they do have a lot of plumbing, electrical, and they actually have some HVAC work going on over at Southwest also. And then on the west side of the gym, we'll have some new locker rooms, so they're doing some of the masonry work over there, getting that all going.
White, when do you think that the Board, that we file enough or close enough for the Board to maybe do a walk-through if they want to of those facilities?
We can do it anytime. We've been taking the principals through, Alan has, and doing some tours. We just need a little bit of notice so we can let the contractors know, and we can set up a time to walk through any of these projects. You know, like Southwest, you can get up on the second floor, and you can actually see the size it's going to be and how everything's looking. You can tell what's the learning stairs and where the bleachers are going to be and everything at a lot of these sites, so.
You can get us a grip, you can do it eventually, just whatever special, just let us know and try to make that connection for you.
Yep. Yeah, I can make it happen anytime. Just reach out to me, and I'll get it set up.
Where are we on George?
George?
Or you can just talk.
We've got the contract. No, I didn't put any slides in there because really all the work's been done. They're working on getting bonds and getting the final approvals, so our plan is to start the Saturday after school gets out. We'll start in on the front entrance at George Elementary. We're working with Swoop really right now to just get all that plan in motion so we can have them out of that office area and stuff the last day of school, and then we won't start work inside until the last, the day after the last day for the teachers. But we have to get going on that front entrance because we want to have it open by the time school starts. So that's the reason we're going to rush that, but everything's in motion for it to Do you guys have any other questions on any of the projects? So I think I've talked about it before, but the state for the past, I don't know how long, ever since I've been here, we've. They had work order system. They're transitioning over to Operation Hero is the new system. So the reason they're looking for a new system, they're wanting something that's more modern. It works with an iPhone or an iPad or a computer. It's a lot more user-friendly. You can add and take away access to people, or the other one, once you put somebody in, they're there forever as far as a user, you know? So it's a lot more user-friendly, but this is going to happen on the October, or April 20th. They're going to shut off School Dude, which is a Thursday, and they're going to switch us over on Saturday at midnight on the 23rd, and then we're going to come in on Sunday, try to get everything switched over and modified and ready for teachers on that following Monday. So I'm going to meet with the principals tomorrow and let them know on that Thursday, Friday, everything will have to be a phone call to, over to maintenance for any of their needs, and if it's just little stuff, they can wait and put it all in on Monday. So that's a big change. We've been working, we've known it's coming for a while, but they actually just sent it out, and they're starting to do the changeovers for all the districts in Springdale.
Or you got to reload, are you pending work orders or stuff that's in process?
It's supposed to change over automatically. They'll do it at midnight, like 11:59, they'll take what our old system had, midnight they'll load it into the new system. We just have to get in there and modify. This new one has a lot more features that the old one didn't have, so we're going to come in that Sunday and go through all of the users, all of the technicians, supervisors, and go through and get all those settings in correctly. That way, that Monday morning when all the teachers and students get here, it should be working good. And all of the teachers will have to log in the first time, but this system is a lot more user-friendly, so Trent's got it set up for the hyperlink to go live on the 21st. So when they go to that, they'll log in, it'll come up to login with Google, and it'll use their information that's in their school email system. So as they change their password on the school email, it'll automatically update into Operation Hero, so it should be a lot more user-friendly. But, so that's a big transition we're going to have to go through next week. Okay.
You sounded very positive, but our techno wizard up here tonight, Ryan, his face didn't look too positive.
It's a lot of information that I hope transitions over, like they said it will, and we have done some test runs, so they uploaded some of our information last Thursday, and we got to go in, and we're starting to work on it now, but we won't have the full system until that Sunday.
So your confidence level's pretty high.
I'm confident, yeah. I'm going to meet with all the principals tomorrow, principal meeting, update them on how all their staff will have to log in, and it's really this first time, and then it'll be very easy. It'll be more convenient, especially like coaches and some of the fine arts that are out on the band practice field or whatever, they can do it right off their cell phone. So you just log into it the same way, put a work order in, you can do whatever. It has two-way communication, so if maintenance texts out and has to order parts, whenever they put that in, if the teacher was the person that submitted, then they will get a message, and it'll say, "Your parts have been ordered." It's a 10-day lead time or a two-day lead time or whatever. So it should help communication better because a lot of our HVAC and stuff, we still have long lead times. We try to keep stuff in stock, but we can never have it all, so. Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, all right, thanks.
Good evening, School Board, Dr. Cleveland. I'm Valerie Hanna and I am your SGA representative and an elementary teacher here in Springdale. And I am happy to be here tonight. I actually had my first actual sick day last Friday. And when I say sick day, I mean I was actually the person that was sick as opposed to my child or a doctor's appointment. And I haven't been sick since before COVID. So I don't know why, fever's not my friend. But I am literally glad to be back and not be at home because it was not a fun weekend, let's just put it that way. So on some not as happy news, our president, Ms. Tucker, had in the tornadoes in Little Rock, her mom and her grandmother both lost their houses. So she is actually traveling tonight trying to get some things squared away with her mom. Her mom's going to be coming up to stay with her for a little while. So definitely thoughts and prayers obviously for all the people in Little Rock. But you know, it's even, you know, more scary when you have those people in your life who you could have lost. And luckily, they went down into their basement and that pretty much was the only part of the house left was where they were. So that is why she is not here this evening because she wasn't able last month because of their school program. And then she was going to be here and then, you know, life happens. Also, over spring break, we did have our ESP of the Year. Sherry Penalto was able to go all the way to Seattle to the National Education Association meeting for ESP and get honored there. So that was really great. One of the things, so you know, obviously with Wards Act, we've kind of hit this place where there's nothing to be done until there's something to be done. But one of the things they kind of finished up with over last week, and the only reason I bring it up is because how it went about. And that was that Senate Bill 473, which takes away the ability for us to have payroll deduct of our professional organizations. They actually voted it down. And we were like, oh my goodness, something finally kind of, you know, we didn't feel like a loss. And they literally the next morning brought it back to the floor and it passed. And it went from, I believe it was like 37, 36, yes, no, to 70, 17. From close to the opening in the morning. And so the reason I bring it up is not so much about that bill in particular, but the fact that it went from such a win to a crazy loss that fast overnight. And I don't think that the people at the state really understand how doing stuff like that makes those of us that it affects feel. To go from that place of like, hey, they listened to us. Hey, we talked to them, we asked them to not do this. They actually listened to just kidding, we didn't actually care. I am grateful that I don't feel this way about those of you that are in front of me right now. That I don't feel like you're going to tell us one thing tonight and tomorrow it's going to be like, hmm, just kidding. So moving forward, though, along with like Dr. Cleveland said about applying to be on some of the boards for the rules and regulations, many of our constituents have. Myself personally, I have. I haven't heard anything either. I don't quite frankly know whether I want them to be like, yes, we would like your help with this. Because in the same way that they did that just kidding the other day, it's like, I'm not sure how that's going to go. But if they ask me to, I would love to be able to help go through this field of craziness that we're in. So last thing, just so you know, Ms. Tucker and I are going to give up part of our summer to go to the National Educators Association yearly convention. And we are just, you know, I just want you to understand how hard it's going to be for us to give up part of that, you know, summer to go to Orlando where they're going to have the conference. You know, so just so you know. But yeah, it should be a good time this summer. It'll be a chance for us to again, meet with educators from other states to learn about the things that maybe they are going through and/or the ways that they're navigating the world of education. And finally, I'm going to do a little pre-thank you because Mr. Hayes reminded me about that little something something that's coming in our check next month. So thank you again for always supporting us, for doing what we need to do. And I really appreciated hearing your words tonight, Dr. Cleveland, about how you guys are, we're going to do what we need to do. So I appreciate all of you, all of you. And also, I am very excited also because I've gotten to sit next to the best shoes in the room, if you haven't seen them. So I am excited for that. Oh, they're fabulous. So that's all I have to say. If you have any questions, I appreciate your time.
Appreciate you being here.
Well, I want to say a couple of things. Tonight was a really good board meeting. I don't know if you really took in, I'm preaching a little bit here, you really took in all those kids that spoke tonight and the teachers and the coaches and the servant leadership that displayed tonight. And the character of those kids, I have hope and humanity in them. That was awesome. That was awesome. I traded camera night and I really enjoyed myself. I'm just truthful, I'm sorry.
If nobody else has any comments, with that, I'm going to adjourn the board meeting. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your evening.